Good evening, thank you everybody. I'm sorry we're a little late. We're just coming out of executive session. We appreciate everyone being here. And tonight is the High School Representatives Speak Out. And the first in line is Springfield Conservatory of the Arts, Zali Diaz, Tiana Ng, and accompanied by Ms. Halm, Drama Teacher, also Assistant Principal William Soto, and the Media Consultant, the ever-present David Horgan. Come on down.
Hello, and thank you for inviting us to speak. My name is Sky Halm. I'm a Drama Teacher at the Springfield Conservatory of the Arts, or SCOTA. At SCOTA, we have an integrated curriculum where each class uses the arts to assist in its lessons. Throughout the year, Dave Horgan and David Sweeney were our media guys. They gave students practical, weekly lessons in how to create and produce high-level video projects. The media class incorporated acting, music, dance, and visual arts standards into their projects. The subjects of videos ranged from mystery to health. Some memorable projects were an all-school mannequin challenge, field trips to WMAS, and TV Channel 22, as well as originally scripted short videos, and a 15-second film festival. We will showcase more of the media classes' work at the Bing Arts Center on Saturday, June 10th, at 1:00 P.M. We hope you all can join us. Here to talk about their experiences in the media class are Mr. Horgan, Tanya Lee, and Zali Diaz.
Thank you very much. My name is David Horgan, and I've been teaching media in the Conservatory for the Arts for the past two years. And a couple of my students have come here tonight. It is a privilege to teach these kids. I've seen them do some absolutely incredible things, the talent. We built a recording studio in one of the classrooms, and watched the kids record their own song, and then turned it into a documentary and a music video, which I can show you very quickly on a laptop if I could approach. And I know our time is limited, so I'll make it quick.
You're like in a courtroom here, Dave. Can you approach? Yeah, across the bench. It's like Law &amp; Order.
So what you're seeing is a combination of the film that one student made, and the music that the other students were creating. And they created this song themselves and sang the melody. We do a combination of, you're capturing some of the dance script writing. So the kids are doing a combination of camera work. They're working on the lighting.
That's you.
Incredible, right? I'm gonna pause this, I don't wanna take up too much time. This is students.
Hello, my name is Tanya Lee, and I was a student in the media class in SCOTA. Thank you for inviting us to speak here tonight. Media helped us know about some real-life careers that have creativity integrated in them. I have been interested in the effects makeup for many years, and Mr. Horgan helped me get the supplies and information necessary to complete the professional quality work. I did effects makeup for multiple videos that Mr. Horgan and other students took recordings of. I worked on creating a zombie, a pencil wound, acid spill on skin, realistic scars, and two other zombies for a pride ad. I also learned how to work multiple things on a video camera, such as focus and unfocus when necessary, how much space you need around the head and body, the correct lighting to use for a specific mood of the video or photo, how to take a good still frame while recording. The teacher let us know what it would be like in a technical job in terms of time, pressure, money, collaboration, and outcome. Mr. Horgan has helped us see that jobs can be created in multiple aspects, and not only lawyers and doctors get a high pay. Having media as a part of our school really added to my enjoyment in coming to school. Everyone in the school system should have a media class if they are truly interested in having one. Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you. There's a singer.
Hi, I'm Zali, and I participated in the Integrated Media Class. Here we did a lot of projects that varied from one another, like working on special FX makeup, or how to compose a professional video, or working on a cover of a song. My favorite part overall was learning different aspects of media, and that it was a lot more than just performing on a stage. Mr. Horgan taught us that what happens behind the scenes of multiple films and music videos. We got to work with high-tech cameras and special lighting instruments to compose multiple videos. We learned how we should look and act depending on the part that we played in the script. Because of all that our class has done, it brought multiple students from different backgrounds closer together, thus forming a relationship. Students who you didn't think would be friends or even work together partnered up and showed their creative skills to make art. Media was a great experience, and I hope to have it again next year. Thank you.
Nice job, Mr. Horgan. Thank you. Thank you very much, Conservatory of the Arts, the High School of Science and Technology's in the house. By the way, your student representative Kenneth Som is doing a great, great job here. Xavier Farrell, pronounce that first name for me.
Xavier.
No, I got Xavier, the X-Man.
Saraji.
Saraji, okay. Omar, okay. I'd rather get it correct. Come on up. And Dr. Walsh, Principal Walsh is here.
Good evening. So I am very excited tonight to showcase our amazing seniors, the Class of 2017, but I'm gonna start that with their Senior Class Assistant Principal, Dr. Gray.
Okay, Dr. Gray, thank you.
I'm surprised, but very proud to be introducing these two students, and very proud of Kenny sitting on the board. We've been together for four years. We're the first team that was together for four years, so I've known them since they were this high, in ninth grade. We've been through ups and downs. We're gonna have some great data, but for us, it's not about the data. It's about the individual stories, and I believe that you're gonna be really amazed with how far these boys have come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay, X-Man.
Hello, everyone. My name is Xavier Farrell. The HSST faculty has consistently demonstrated that they desire the success of every student that attends SciTech. Giving students the resources they need to be successful, as well as inspiring them to achieve that success, is a motivating force for HSST. Through their words and actions, they've worked to build the strength of the student body as a community in addition to the individual student. This was a passion and purpose that I lacked upon entering high school. At the beginning of my high school career, my efforts were primarily directed towards my own future. Sadly, the mindset that governed my actions at the time was that my success was independent of the success of those around me. Then I found myself on a team called the Blue Barracudas. Myself and a number of other students were assigned to a specific group of teachers and administrators which made up the Blue Barracudas. I wasn't necessarily ecstatic to be on this team, but it didn't seem to be a roadblock on my path to success, so I didn't make a fuss. I wasn't necessarily the most humble guy around. During this time, I learned that we were not the only team among the Class of 2017. There were actually several others, such as the White Wolves and the Red Rhinos. Outside of the fact that they had much cooler names, I still was essentially indifferent to the established team systems, and I thought it would remain this way for the rest of my high school career. Thankfully, I was incorrect. Before long, my team was competing against these other teams for various accolades such as Most Improved Attendance or Most Prepared for Class. Being overly competitive, I made sure to be in school all the time, as well as get right to the activator as soon as I entered class. However, I knew my actions alone weren't going to get us victory. Although it may have been for the wrong reasons, the HSST team system got a student who was thoroughly unconcerned about his peers' success to now desire that they be in school as much as possible, as well as get right to work upon entering class. This wasn't the end goal, but it was a step in the right direction. Despite this progress, I was still very self-absorbed when it concerned my future. That would eventually change as well. Since students on the same teams were assigned to the same teachers, I spent my time in school surrounded by the same faces and voices, and inevitably friendships were formed. In some cases, very strong bonds were formed, and things that would have never concerned me before started to matter. Whether my team members came to class or passed a test were now concerns of mine, not because of an ulterior motive, but because I had their best interest in mind. While I was in the beginning stages of this transition between an "I" mentality to a "we" mentality, there were often assemblies which promoted the idea of community, that I was a part of something bigger than myself. During these events, every time success or achievement was mentioned, it was rarely mentioned on the individual scale, but rather, it was something that you worked toward together. Seeds were being planted. As the years passed, I came across two teachers that changed my life forever. The first was Mr. Gary Bernice, and the second being Mr. Robert Hoski. Both of these members of the HSST faculty poured into my life in ways that I could not have ever expected. I learned what leadership meant through my time in the SciTech band. Mr. Bernice not only informed me, but showed me that true leadership was rooted in humility, that it was service to others, and that it was putting the needs of my community before my own. The truth behind his philosophy was evidenced by the lives he inspired and changed for the better, mine included. Secondly, Mr. Hoski shared with me the value of using your life to pour into the lives of others. He told me about his past in which he was a member of the Peace Corps. During his time of service, he was a part of a project that developed a small community in Ecuador. As he described the difference he made in the lives of those he helped, I began to understand the value in caring about and responding to the needs of others. The HSST community brought me to a point where I was aware of the needs of others, I cared about those needs, and I began to see how I could potentially pour into the lives of those around me. Even with these drastic changes that were taking place in how I perceived my surroundings, everything still seemed somewhat distant. I could see the validity in that kind of community-focused thinking, but I hadn't fully embraced it yet. This would also change. Throughout this time, the HSST faculty was well-aware of my academic achievement and saw potential in that. The potential lied in something beyond my own future successes, though. They saw that I could be a pillar of support for the students around me, and that this was an opportunity for my own growth as an individual. All of a sudden, teachers and administrators requested that I find time to tutor a number of students across a number of different subjects. I was compliant outwardly, but inwardly, I was mumbling and grumbling about all the things that I had to do and things of that nature. Little did I know that these experiences of tutoring and eventually mentoring would water the seeds that were planted up until that point. I was able to see firsthand just how much value lied in helping others, in building connections. When the students I tutored came boasting about academic improvements or that they forced themselves to do their homework, I felt like I was successful as a student. I now had acquired an experience where my feelings of success was dependent on the success of those around me. Today, I am committed to using my life to positively impact the lives of those around me. The HSST faculty, the HSST family, has helped bring me to a place where unity, family, and the success of my community govern my actions. Each student that I have been able to support academically and emotionally is the outcome and legacy of the HSST team system. This faculty works tirelessly to encourage and prepare their students to develop themselves, support their fellow classmates, and contribute to the overall success of their community. I will never forget my time here as a member of the HSST family, as a Cybercat. Thank you.
Nice job, Mr. Farrell. Looking sharp, sounding sharp. Way to go, Xavier.
Hello, my name is Sarajir Moro, and I'm a senior at the High School of Science and Technology. I would like to start this by saying, a teacher instructs specific skills and content according to a curriculum and developmental level. However, an educator coaches individuals to become what is essential. They help to develop them into human beings who are fully alive. I say this because the individuals I have met throughout my four years at the High School of Science and Technology are all educators and have pushed me through the roof on what they believe I can achieve. Family, that is the one word that comes to mind when talking about four years in teams at the High School of Science and Technology. Coming into high school, I didn't know who I was, and I feel as though no high school ever does. So many people change and develop themselves individualistically, but that was not me. I needed guidance, a system. I desperately needed the support of someone. My home life isn't great. I come from a broken home, and my mother is a recovering addict. Almost all my uncles are in jail, and I've had absolutely no role model in terms of going to a higher-ed institution. The teams unified me with peers who motivated me to do everything that I can and be the person I want to be. Educators who stimulating conversations made me feel like I was learning how to be a young man the right way. Let me let you in on a secret. Most of my peers deal with home issues, and like me, are not afraid to go home, but rather just not. When the teams were created, it gave educators a chance to have a closer bond and connect with who we really are, knowing our problems. Knowing us, knowing our problems, knowing us, not just as students, but as people. I've spent countless hours after school conversing with educators about everything, from conclusions on papers to my mother being homeless somewhere, being somewhere homeless and away from me at night. Peers at my school have never had a problem, per se, with the work, but with the 50 billion distractions that manipulate their mind on a daily. Take those away, and you have success stories such as the individual you see here today. Family, bonds, support, these are what comes to mind when I think of my four years in teams at the High School of Science and Technology. To be simple, they work, and I'm a product of that. In the fall, I am on my way to Springfield College, and I'm not paying a dime, as I am on a full scholarship. That is not only thanks to my work ethic, but the countless hours educators, peers, and administration spent supporting me. Thank you for your time.
Tough enough to make it when everything's going the right way. Hell of a story with all the adversity. Thank you, young man. Very, very good job. Springfield High School's in the house. Alex Rivera, accompanied by Assistant Principal Matthew Bean. Come on down. It's a hell of a story.
Hi, my name is Alex Rivera. I currently go to Springfield High School, and it's a great place to learn because I have individual time to learn with my teachers, and this is an overall great experience. I have a great principal. This summer, I'm going back to Florida to spend time with my family and coming back and hopefully going to a traditional high school, thanks to the help of Mr. Bean. I use my time at school to learn and help my peers and just benefit from it, so I'm there. And I didn't expect I would be here, and I just want to thank you guys.
Good job, Rivera.
I've been doubted a lot. I've just been trying a lot in my life. This past winter season of basketball, I played JV for Putnam. Played against the Cybercats, yeah. Played against Central, all the other traditional high schools, and it was just a great time, just going around, meeting other people, and knowing that there's like a barrier to break and more to see in life. And Springfield has helped me out a lot, and I like the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, Springfield Renaissance is in the house. Axel Perez, Jeski, Kukosa, Griffin Dunn, accompanied by Principal Aria Colburn, and Jen Freddie, Assistant Principal. Come on down.
So I just want to introduce Griffin Dowd. He's a senior who was honored at Declaration Day today at the Renaissance School, which was pretty awesome. And Axel Perez, who is a sophomore. Jesse is also a senior, and he got pulled away. So I have our two young gentlemen to talk about ambassadors at Renaissance.
Great, thank you.
So I have a quote from our principal from a meeting we had a while back. It says, "It is not the staff that determines the success of a school, rather than students." And that is truly the mission statement of Renaissance ambassadors. It is a program housing 40-plus students on a light day that we manage all of the school events in our building, whether it be Declaration Day, where all the seniors stand-stage and announce where they're going to college, whether it be Senior Class Day, where we're getting our cumulative folders and on our way out the door, or a site seminar where we invite educators from around the country to come in and see how we do school. And so, the work for the Renaissance ambassadors begins in September. We take applications from new ambassadors. They have to give us a 15-minute tour around the building, telling us what they're proud of, what we can learn from them, and all that kind of stuff. And so, Mr. Sosa, please don't take a picture of me. This message began back in 2006, when our school was founded. It was Dr. Steve Mahoney. Mr. Mahoney, rather, was a very busy man. And so, he was often bouncing off the walls, doing a lot of things. And one day, we had an applicant for the founding of our seventh-grade class, one of the teachers, and he passed them on to a rising 10th grader and was like, "Hey, I'm busy right now. Can you please give this person a tour? Tell them about our school, get a feel for them, and we'll come back together later and talk." And that message has been carried through this program. Just last week, we had an English 108th teacher, who is a student teacher, came in. I gave the interview to them while Ms. Aria Colburn was busy handling some administrative things. And it's just, it's an amazing opportunity for students. Jesse Kukosa, who was the other senior supposed to be here, was the master of ceremonies for the first EL Gala held in New York City last year. He sat in front of 1,000-plus people, who paid $1,000-plus for their plates of food, and was able to just deliver his speech in a manner that was amazing. And those opportunities came from our site seminar. And I'm gonna turn it over to Axel, and I'll come back to you guys in a little bit.
Good job, Griffin. Axel, you're up.
Hey.
Hey.
So, this is my first time being here in the school committee. I'm not even nervous, but I like this. Right now, I'm currently a sophomore. I've been ambassador since 7th grade, so this is my third or fourth year. It's my fourth year, actually. And I remember the 7th grade, my first time being ambassador. I was really happy, but then again, really nervous. I was happy because I was gonna represent the school to people from across the country, which is site seminar. But then I get nervous because I didn't want to leave a bad impact on the name of our school. So basically, my first job was a tour guide, and I've been a tour guide since 7th grade. As a tour guide, we gave a tour around the school, introduced them to our motto, showed them around, and taught them how we do school. My first year was pretty nerve-wracking. I remember this guy, he came from Texas. That's like, well, across the country, and I'm like, oh my God, he's actually here. I'm actually gonna show him around. It went pretty smoothly. I wasn't nervous, you know, I just smiled. I'm a smiley person, you know, I'm gonna keep smiling. And I showed him around, and at the end, he actually gave a compliment. And that stuck to me till this day. And I'm gonna keep doing this till senior year. I'm not gonna have a break. I enjoy doing this. Site seminar is actually the funnest week in the Springfield Renaissance School, personally for me, because people from across the country come, and I'm able to show them around. And hopefully, I'll be able to keep doing this till senior year, and that's it.
Great job.
So Axel brought up the point of his friend he made in Texas. And so, in my phone, which is somewhere over there, is a business card from a woman named Adrienne Eldridge, who is the Student Affairs Administrator at a small school in Minnesota. At home, I have the business card of Ally Brown, a school designer from New York, and many more. And so, the networking possibilities that arise, and the opportunities that arise in this event are unmatched in our building. And so, it is just an amazing opportunity for these students to like, get up and meet someone and try something new and make some friends along the way. Thank you.
Nice job, guys. Axel, we're gonna call you Smiling Jack. Great smile. Springfield Public Day High School's in the house. Anaya Morgan is accompanied by Christian Hensaw, Science Teacher, Student Council Coordinator. Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Dominic Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, school committee members, and all in attendance. My name is Anaya Morgan, and I am a member of the Springfield Public Day High School Student Council. It is my pleasure to be before you today, representing my learning institution. As a member of the Springfield Public Day High School Student Council, I am pleased to have a voice that is heard not only through our learning community, but by those who have joined us here today. I will keep this brief tonight, as this is my last time appearing at the Springfield School Committee Speak Out. Today, I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. I am currently a senior at the Springfield Public Day High School, and I'll be graduating in June. I plan on attending Holyoke Community College in the fall. The path and challenges I have faced along the way have not been easy. I credit my teachers at the Springfield Public Day High School for providing me with opportunities to not only advance me along in my education, but also to make me a better, stronger person. In closing, I would like to thank Superintendent Warwick and the school committee for continuing to provide places such as Springfield Public Day High School and other alternative learning institutions for students, such as myself, and to have a place to learn and grow, most importantly. Thank you again for all allowing me to speak at this.
Thank you, Anaya. Nice job. Thank you, girl. Okay, my alma mater, the High School of Commerce is in the house. Elena Kubulek, corrected from wrong, and Eric Zerilla. Come on down, accompanied by Rick Lungford. Mr. Lungford.
Hi, my name's Lena Kubulek, and we're here to let you guys know a little updates on the High School Commerce, like the current events that we have.
So first and foremost, I want to acknowledge our sophomores for completing their...
Tell me your name.
Oh, Eric, I'm Eric Zerilla.
Loud and proud, all right.
Yes, thank you. I want to acknowledge our sophomores for completing their math and English MCATs. And our students will be preparing for their science MCATs by attending the MCAT jump boot camp that we have on May 25th and June 3rd. And I want to give a special shout-out to our track team for winning...
Congratulations, city.
For winning the All-City Meet,
That's right.
And for our softball team for making the playoffs.
Our IB students... Our IB seniors have just finished up their exams this week. 20% of our seniors were taking IB exams, and that's a 5% increase compared to last year. So that's like, that means more... And to reward them, we'll be having an IB field trip to Boston on the 22nd, and we'll just go there to take in the rich history of the city. They'll drop us off in the morning, and we'll just, you know, go around sites and, you know.
I got you, I got you.
And tomorrow, the National Honor Society put on a field trip for honor roll students to participate in Bodenborg, Boston. It's like an escape room where you'll be practicing your team-building skills, and then a team's of five, and then, you know, you do challenges. It's, it's going to be fun tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's-
Pretty much the update for our school.
Thank you, Red Raiders. Okay, Putnam Technical Academy is in the house. Norm's proud of that. Truster Corey, who I just saw Sedesco Scholarship Award winner the other night, we were together, the superintendent, and Mr. Collins. Jay Sean Pickney, come on down, guys. And they're accompanied by Vera Denko. Correct. That's right, sorry, Assistant Principal.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm Vera Denko, I'm the 12th grade Assistant Principal at Putnam. I'm super honored to introduce you to two of our outstanding leaders in the class of 2017. If you ask any of the other class members, they would definitely point out these two young men. So first is Truster Corey. He is in the Allied Health Shop, and he earned his CNA certification this year, but that wasn't enough for Truster. He also decided that he wanted to study some info tech this year, so he started taking AP Computer Science classes on his academic week. And then we have Jay Sean, who not only excelled in his retail shop, he decided, you know, on the side, to start his own clothing line and has been known to don a beaver suit now and then. So let me-
Thank you, Ms. Denko.
Good evening.
What's up, Truster?
My name is Truster Corey, I'm a senior at Putnam, and I'm here to speak about what Putnam has meant to me over the years. Since my freshman year, I'm very, I've been really passionate about giving back to community, and thanks to Putnam, I've had many opportunities, including Hundred Males of College, a program geared towards young males in the school system and preparing them and guiding them on the college process. There's also Project Purple, which is a program that spreads awareness about substance abuse and has allowed many of us to give back to community through like breast cancer walks, canned food drives, and there's also, sorry, there's also-
You're doing fine, Truster. Did a great job, Hundred Males of College the other night, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm blanking out right now, I'm sorry.
Lot of good things at Putnam.
Oh my God, I just had it. All right, yeah.
It happens to me all the time.
Yeah.
Jay Sean, you better put that, put the mascot suit on. You'll come out of the bullpen, okay. Trust, okay.
Hello, my name is Jay Sean Pickney. I'm very glad to be a part of Putnam and to be soon alumni. Start off with freshman year, oh man, I was a horrible Jay Sean. I was getting Ds, Bs, I wasn't, I don't know, I didn't know what I wanted to do my freshman year. Sophomore year came around, I got introduced to Hundred Males of College, opened my eyes a whole, whole lot, because it helped me understand what college was actually about, and it helped me understand that in college, they're there to help you, because before, I thought it was just a whole bunch of people that just took your money and didn't care if you learned or not. But there's actually people that actually help out. Junior year, I just started getting more active into Putnam, I became the Beaver.
Yeah.
Danced a lot.
The mascot.
And then I hooked up with my friend Ray Raphael, and we became, wow, we became Tiger Dreams, and we're on our third season. And now, I'm ready to graduate. I'm on the volleyball team. We're, we're right now playing for the league championship. I couldn't make it because I decided to talk here, but shout-out to Putnam's volleyball team. And yeah, I'm going to let Truster take it.
All right, Truster, you're out of the bullpen, you're up again.
So there's Hundred Males of College, Project Purple, and Skills USA. Skills USA is a vocational competition where it teaches us how to be leaders in the workforce in our communities. And through Skills USA, I've been able to spread autism awareness, and I've competed in the state competition. So all these programs and opportunities, along with others, they've really made me who I am today. And I'm proud to say that thanks to Putnam, I wouldn't be who I am right now. So it's, it's just crazy looking back and just thinking like, I'm leaving all this behind, and a lot more is to come. So I'm proud to say that I'll be graduating Putnam next month, and I'm moving on to University of Massachusetts Amherst this fall.
That's great stuff. Skills, Skills USA, the Red Jackets, and the Hundred Males of College, again, a big shout-out to Dr. Yolanda Johnson. She just does it, that has been a, a home-run program, and you can see the attributes right here. Mascot, you have something else to say, I can tell already.
I'll be attending Westfield State University.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Truster. Good job. Okay, last but not least, there's Liberty Prep Academy, the SSARC High School Completion Program. Sadina Murray is here, Dejean, I'm sorry, Janay Evans, and accompanied by Acting Assistant Principal, Jen McQuade. Come on down. Hey, Jen.
So to wrap real quick, I have a young gentleman that was in the bathroom, he wanted to speak up. His school is here, but he was out of pocket, but once they finish, if you would allow him, just say a couple of words from Springfield Public School.
The-
But when they finish, I'm so sorry, because I just wanted a voice.
We had one representative from Springfield Public Day School, which was, already had spoken.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe at another time, we can do that, sir? Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jen McQuade, I'm Acting Assistant Principal, come on, Sadina, at High School Completion Program, and I'd like to introduce Sadina Murray, who is one of about a little over fifty students who are at risk of dropping out at one point and will be graduating.
Okay. Hi, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and all members of the school committee. My name is Sadina Murray, but the staff at High School Completion call me Sadiva because I'm a diva. I came to Springfield from Queens, New York, my sophomore year, and attended High School of Commerce, but my time at Commerce didn't go very well. And during the beginning of my junior year, I was referred to High School Completion by my worker, Julia. At this point, I felt like I was never going to make it through high school, never mind graduate. I have been at High School Completion since my junior year. I have had ups and downs, but the staff never gave up on me, encouraged me, and most importantly, have worked with me despite my mood swings and drama, and gave me the opportunity to be myself and express myself in every way. I am eighty-seven percent done with my final online course, which I hope to finish tomorrow, and will be graduating on June 13th with the High School of Commerce.
All right.
I am very thankful for the teachers and staff at High School Completion, who never gave up on me, never judged me, and my thanks go out to Ms. Jacobs, of course, Ms. Maduros, Ms. Griffin, Ms. McQuade, she's like my second mom.
All right, Jen.
Ms. Barbara, and even our new security guard, Dave. The staff has been very patient and helpful to me every day. I think High School Completion is a great opportunity for students like me who struggle in a big high school setting and just need more help. Tomorrow, we are having a celebration, lunch on for our 2017 graduates at 12:30. Please feel free to come by and share our success. And I am very honored to be here, because I didn't think I would be in here at all. I recently got accepted to HTC College, and, and I'm hoping to be a pediatrician one day, because that's like my lifelong dream.
That's very good.
So, thank you to everybody.
You are a diva, all right. Good job. That concludes the High School Representative Speak Out. We'll have a one-minute recess, so you're more than welcome to stay before we move into our formal meeting. Great job tonight, kids, thank you so much. Apologize, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President? President? Can we all please rise for a moment of silence and then to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We're also joined by our very able and capable and student representative from SciTech, Kenny Asimis is here also, too. Kenneth, thank you very, very much, and his family. We'll now move to approval of the minutes of April 26, 2017, public hearing meeting, the April 27, 2017, regular school committee meeting, and the May 3, 2017, special meeting. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, motion on the floor by School Committee Member Roland. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Hurst. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it. Items requiring a vote of the school committee. A is to approve the Springfield Renaissance student trip to Boston, Mass., May 27 through the 29, 2017. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The approval form's in your package, I'm recommending approval, great opportunity for the kids.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy, second by School Committee Member Roland. Roll call voters require, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President? Yes? Mr. Collins? Mr. O'Dea? Mr. President? Yes? Mr. President? Yes?
Yes, more sufficient votes, matter passes, thank you. B is to approve Springfield Renaissance students to travel to Barton's Cove in Gill, Massachusetts, June 18 through the 20, 2017. Superintendent Warwick, please.
And I'm recommending approval and other good opportunity for the kids from Renaissance.
Any questions or comments?
There's a form in your packet.
Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Ms. Perez, there's a second. Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call voters require, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President? Yes? Mr. Collins? Yes? Mr. President? Yes? Mr. O'Dea? Yes?
Yes, more sufficient votes, matter passes, thank you. C is to approve the Springfield Renaissance student trip to Australia in June 2018. Superintendent Warwick.
Yeah, they're in way ahead with the approval on this, this great trip. I was hoping you'd approve this trip and maybe approve me as a chaperone on the trip for the students, but it sounds great and give them time to plan it, so I'm recommending approval.
On the amended version, I'm just kidding, okay. It's a motion by Mr. Roland, is there a second? Second by Ms. Perez, roll call voters require, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President? Mr. Collins? Yes? Mr. O'Dea? Yes? Mr. Murphy? Yes?
Yes, more sufficient votes, matter passes, thank you. D is to approve the Memorandum of Understanding, the MOU, between the Springfield Public Schools and the Springfield Police Department regarding the student support unit, Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor. There's several informational items in your packet. One is the actual Memorandum of Understanding that allows us to have the service from the police department for the schools. Another piece, and a very important piece, is some data on the arrests in the city of Springfield that have occurred, going back to 2008 and 2009, when there were 444 arrests, and last year where there were 79. And we're on par, as you can see from the attached form, for around the same number this year. So the arrests are way down in the city of Springfield. I'd attribute that to the great work of the staff at the schools, the increase in every positive category relative to what the students are doing, and in the training and support of the police department. So very positive data. There's also a packet of information relative to questions and answers on what, what students are, you know, what the parameters are by which we can work with the police department in this Memorandum of Understanding. So I'd like to bring up Attorney Phelps, if there's any questions, and maybe Bill Baker, but I'm recommending approval of this contract as we go forward. We've reduced the police force from 23 to 17 because the arrests are so far down, and then the suspensions are down, batteries are down, and things have gotten better across the schools. So we've reduced the size of the police force, so the amount of the contract is down from 1.7 to 1.3 million.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. And I'd have to say that this has been a very successful program. The relationships that have been built with our students and our police department have been tremendous. Again, it is only last cause if an individual, he or she, is causing potential harm to the rest of the students in the school. But the facts, statistics speak for themselves, and they also show off in the school test scores we have, the attendance, truancy down, dropout rate down, graduation rate up. So the relationship between the schools and the police department has been outstanding, and it's really built some positive interaction with our police department. These police officers are specially trained and handpicked to go into our schools, so again, it is more of a relationship building. And very, and infrequently, where they have to be called upon to make sure that the rest of our students, no matter what creed, color, and background, continue to receive a quality education. With that, I will open it up to the floor.
I would just suggest that this has been through two subcommittees. It's been through Legislative and Contracts, chaired by Rosa, and it's been through Budget, chaired by Chris. We had a joint subcommittee on this, so I didn't know if those members wanted to make a comment, but.
Ms. Perez?
Yeah, we took this subcommittee, and we went over some concerns the committee had in regards of the arrests, and this is something that needs to be done now, because we need to pay our police department. And it can be amendment within a year, even though it's a five-contract year. I recommend that we will honor it.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Mr. Roland? Mr. Collins?
I've been involved in the evolution of this MOU for about ten years, being on finance for the whole time. It is a much better document than it used to be. It now includes provisions for training, it includes parameters about, you know, our personnel handling disciplinary matters, and police only becoming involved if it's some type of a matter of law. Some of those things didn't, if someone looked at an older contract, it wouldn't have been as clear, but they are certainly spelled out now, and it has become a much better document with the students' best interest that drove the document. So it's a very, I'm, it got a unanimous vote of approval, and it is, it's changed over the years. We've heard people in the community, we've made adjustments to it, and it's a, this is the result of a lot of discussion, a lot of talk, and it's a much better document than it was ten years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Roland, and then I'll go to Ms. Gresham.
Thank you. I agree with colleagues, we've done a lot of good work, and there's some changes that have helped our system, and I think we could do a little bit more with, with the co-conduct and working with our parents to describe what they are as we go forward, and have an opportunity to open the door for them to come in and express their concern or their ideas on the co-conduct, if they have any comments. Working together, though, I think working together, opening that door for us to have that dialogue with them, is going to help us to relate better to them and them relate better to us their concerns as well. I think we should, I agree with the MOU, I agree with the changes, though. I think I have reserved on how we could better work with our parents and the concerns that they may have, not after the fact of the arrest, but before the arrest, so they're clear on the wording of the co-conduct. And with that, I see some good stuff that happened, that I, some of, I met with some of the local community members and, and actually, parents as well, telling me their concerns about when I cleared to them what the policies were that we changed and the changes that were there. They were amazed and happy, but I think they're concerned of not being inclusive, of being with us to understand the wording. But giving them a chance and working with them, I think it's a home run for all of us, because then we're inclusive to work with them. And I'll never say no with our parents and kids if they have concerns regarding this, because it's a one-time shot that they have, and I know certain situations where the kid may be a special, needed kid, the parent doesn't know the rights and what they have. doesn't know the rights and what they have, and if they know what the rights are, it helps them to know that. So that's my input in this, part of this conversation towards what the MOU should be looked like a little bit more, and my concerns towards that.
Thank you, Ms. Roland.
But I agree with what we've done so far, but I think we do a little bit more.
Thank you. Ms. Gresham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback on what Mr. Norman was saying, is that there's a bill now in legislation that will be an act to discriminate nonviolent and student verbal conduct. And I know that our officers are trained to de-escalate.
That's right. De-escalation.
Yes. So there is, there is some things that's going to be happening that's going to be good for us.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Yes, Ms. Hurst. Let's have a little order and decorum. Thank you very much. Ms. Hurst?
Thank you, Mayor. So I know that we have a lot of community activists who are currently in the audience, and I want to make sure that we acknowledge all the work that Neighbor to Neighbor has done, because I think that this issue is an important issue, and I don't say that lightly. I have two young boys, one who already attends the Springfield Public Schools, and another who will soon be on their way because I believe in our district. And so I also have to ensure that I commend the superintendent and his team because I know that even one arrest is too many, but we have made significant progress. And I do agree with Mr. Roland when he says that perhaps we can do more. And I do think that we need to ensure that we're having continuous dialogue with the people that are out there, the community organizations, the parents, so that we can get your perspective about what's happening. So I... And so I just think, you know, I've had consistent conversations with my colleagues and the superintendent, and I had the opportunity to meet with your, with some of your leaders. I just want to make sure that we're giving the right, accurate information because this is really important stuff. And so I know that we're committed on this side. I know that you're committed on that side, and I think that the best way to move forward is to ensure that we're talking as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Just, Ms. Gresham and Mr. Roland brought up an important point. If it does arise the situation of arrests, we do try to work out diversion-type aspects too in the court systems if a mistake has been made at that time with that young man or that young woman or person. But the facts speak for themselves. The positive relationships that have been built with our student body administration and police department are quite evident. We also have an obligation, an obligation, to make sure, no matter what creed, color, and background, that each and every one of the students are in a safe environment, and that's important. So if someone is, rises to the occasion where police intervention is needed, that has to be looked upon. And then again, if there's a situation, there's diversionary programs too that try to help these individuals out so they can move forward in a, in a positive step. Any other questions or comments? Vice Chair Murphy?
So I just would like to echo what Ms. Perez...
If you have a little decorum, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Murphy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. You know, I worked for a couple of years down in the Springfield Juvenile Court, and you know, it is not a place, it's not a good place to bring our young people, our young students. It's really not going to get better for them, in my opinion, in that system, other than the most, the most serious of cases where there is no other alternative. So I think that, you know, in 2008, 2009, we had 444 arrests in our system, which was, you know, really too high, way too high. And last year, we had 75 or 79. So we're certainly, we're down, I believe, about 70%. You know, we're moving in the right direction. It's certainly not perfect. Dialogue, I hope, will continue. I thought, had a nice conversation today with some folks from Neighbor to Neighbor, and you know, I just think that we, the fewer, as Ms. Hurst said, you know, the fewer arrests we have, the better for everybody, because getting kids involved in the criminal justice system in Springfield Juvenile Court, for the most part, you know, does not result in a good outcome for our young people. So, you know, as the mayor said, we have diversionary programs. We should continue to increase those. I think we have, one of the good things that was in the document that we received from Neighbor to Neighbor today was continued training and education for our police officers that do work in the schools, to make sure that they're up on all the best practices regarding de-escalation and making an arrest the absolute last possible outcome for, for our students. So, but that being said, I do think we have a lot of very committed and caring police officers who live in this community. As Ms. Hurst alluded to, her children go to the Springfield Public Schools. I have three children in the Springfield Public Schools. There are, unfortunately, things that happen in our country. We saw Newtown and other types of incidents that happened. So we, I think we need to provide security for our students. It's critical that our, our officers are trained to make sure that they keep our children safe first and foremost, and then intervene in disciplinary disputes at the very minimal level. So I hope we can continue to create dialogue on this and continue to get better so we don't have to arrest except for in the most extreme circumstances where there is no other choice. So, very much appreciate the work that all you guys have done on this and plan on voting for it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Murphy? Any other questions, Scott? Mr. Roland?
One more thing. And thank to my colleagues for, you know, showing their concern about how we feel about this. This is really strong to us because, like I said, we care about our kids. I was born and raised in Springfield, and I remember the days where, you know, things were not as bad, but time changes, and there's more issues in the world, and our kids going through a tough time. But I don't want to drop this. I want to make sure that after this meeting, we meet, go out and meet with our leaders in our community and say, "Listen, yes, we are going to hold to this, to light," and sit with you, Neighbor to Neighbor, with our community, and sit with them and say, "Listen, yeah, we're going to work with you guys." So I want a commitment, you know, after this is all done and voted, that we will meet with them and work with them on this and hand in hand. I think, and I'm speaking to them, they're proud of what's happened in the city, and they were happy to see that our school system, you know, has improved. They just wanted to talk to us and make their point of view and what they felt, and I think giving them fair shot because they do fair shot, because they do represent the city, our neighborhoods. I think working with them...
(applause)
I think working with them is going to be a home run for all of us, and the mayor's right. You done, we've done some good stuff, Mayor, and I think now approaching and closing the gap completely, the whole gap, it's going to help all of us. And I agree with our colleagues, their point of view with Barbara and Peter and Chris and all of us. I think, I think this one was a close one to our heart, and we worked hard on this one. So I just want to make sure we don't forget that piece at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Roland. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor.
Motion to, second.
Motion by Mr. Roland, a second. Second by Ms. Perez. Roll call voters required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more sufficient votes. Matter passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to informational discussion items. A is to recognize John J. Duggan Academy at Springfield Central High School for receiving Magnet Schools of Distinction Award, and Springfield Renaissance School for receiving the Magnet Schools of, bless you, Excellence Award. He's designated the 2017 Secondary Magnet School of the Year. I know that Principal Calvinese is here from Duggan Academy. Principal Tokars is here from Central. I don't know if representing from Renaissance?
Renaissance. Jen and Freddie.
And Fred. Okay. Okay. Wanted to make sure on that. So Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, great honor. The Magnet Schools program has been a great program for us, but they got, three of our schools getting national recognition. Renaissance, which seems like recognition after recognition. Secondary Magnet School of the Year, as we know, they jumped accountability level also this year. So, so proud of the work the team at Renaissance has done, and just great job. And also, Central and Duggan also getting recognized as Magnet Schools of Excellence. So, you know, the awards just keep coming in for these schools. And when you go to these schools and you go around to the classrooms, you can see why. The teachers, the leadership at the school, there's a tremendous level of commitment to our kids and to moving the ball forward. So, program's been great for us, and these are great schools. So I thought maybe we could bring the representatives from the schools forward, and I'd like to bring, if I could, Josh Bogan, our Magnet School Director, forward to say a few words about what's going on with the program in these schools.
Josh, great tie-in, and I'm not surprised the creativeness you have anyway, so.
Well, thank you, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, committee members. It's an honor. I'm truly honored to be here. It just came from a gathering in my backyard of my son Aaron's friends who were on their way to the prom, and goes by very quickly. In many ways, my feelings about our Magnet Schools are similar to my feelings as a parent, having the opportunity to experience the growth and development of unique, innovative, and carefully nurtured programs, to which I feel deeply connected and to which I feel deeply invested. It's a special thrill to be here as we celebrate the recent Magnet Schools of America honors awarded to Renaissance, Central, and Duggan. Magnet Schools of America established the National Merit Awards Program to recognize the top Magnet Schools in the United States. These awards are given to Magnet Schools that show a commitment to high academic standards, curriculum innovation, successful desegregation and diversity efforts, and the consistent delivery of high-quality educational services to all stakeholders. The 2017 MSA awards to these three schools are the product of coherent and keenly focused leadership by Principals Aria Coburn, Mike Calvinese, and Tad Tokars, and of the deep commitment of their Magnet implementation teams, teaching staffs, parents, students, and community business and higher education partners. Magnet grants provide golden opportunities for our schools, but it takes resolve, dedication to rigorous instructional practice, and commitment to implementation of comprehensive, theme-based initiatives. In the case of these three honorees, Expeditionary Learning and STEM at Renaissance, Expeditionary Learning and Social Justice at Duggan, STEM Arts and Advanced Studies at Central. To move these grants from being simply extra funds to being incubators for profound, meaningful, and lasting change that improves immeasurably the educational and potential, potentially future lives of the students who attend these schools. I want to take a special moment to compliment Renaissance on this remarkable honor of being recognized as the nation's Secondary Magnet School of the Year.
Yeah. A million-dollar smile, kid.
Also, a shout-out to Kathy Harbor, who unfortunately couldn't make it this evening, who works largely behind the scenes to give the Magnet program its tensile strength, and who assisted in the submission of these MSA award applications. Finally, I want to personally thank Aria, Mike, and Tad for being such gracious partners, and the wonderful Magnet staff who lead the day-to-day Magnet implementation work at the three schools, and truly did most of the heavy lifting and scribing in the applications which led to these awards. That would be Jess Angabretson and John Paul Maitinsky, who's over at Renaissance with Aria Coburn at their Phoenix Rising evening tonight, Mary Kay Brown, and Stephen Stroud, whose, whose wife is on the school committee and amorous and had to do, and so Stephen had to do childcare duty this evening at Duggan, and Diane Mackey, who could not be with us this evening at Central. And finally, of course, thanks to the school committee, all of you, to Superintendent Warwick and to Pat Roach for your support, continued support of this very important work. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
I appreciate the more you say.
I just want to point out, Tad, K. Murray has senior prom going on tonight. Central's just done a great job, and Mike Calvinese and the staff from Renaissance. Just great work. So proud of you because these schools are a treasure to visit.
Would the principals or representative, I'd like to say a few words.
You know, I just want to thank the school committee. Obviously, without your support, this would never be possible. Pat Roach is just a genius when it comes to finances and finding us the money that we need to be successful. And finally, last but not least, Josh Bogan, who he's been unbelievable, and his ability to get money and to point us in the right direction to, to improve our schools and to build capacity is second to none. So, from the bottom of our hearts, Josh, everybody at Central, the students and the staff, we thank you for everything you have done, and we hope to work with you in the future on more grants, hopefully in the upcoming years.
Thanks, Tad.
Tad's always working it.
Principal Calvinese?
Mike, want to say something?
I just want to say thanks to the school committee as well and echo Tad's thanks of Josh Bogan. Josh has been a great partner at STEM and at Duggan here. So really, thank Josh for all the support, and money helps a little too, so that's all. And I just want to also point out, Stephen Stroud is down here today. He's been an unbelievable person for us at STEM and at Duggan. But Mary Kay Brown, 23 years here in the district, and... Not the easiest guy to work with, and they know that, but I tell you, these people work so hard, and I just thank them so much for the work they do, and I thank the school committee for recognition. And Ms. Gresham is on our advisory board that Ms. Brown has set up at Duggan, and you know that you get those emails from Ms. Brown regularly.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Principal Calvinese. Dan Freddie? Or the Renaissance family, please?
Yes, and Jane. So, we just want to thank you as well, and on behalf of our whole school family, and Axel with his amazing smile. Axel has benefited a lot from the STEM Magnet program at Renaissance. And last year, we were able to have a team of teachers come together and work with WPI to do our sustainability plan. So after all the amazing money, we were still able to sustain the work, and Mr. Sosa, who is going to Hawaii and New Zealand, also was on that team as a social studies teacher. So it's really like STEM, but we've been able to fuse it with the Expeditionary Learning piece, and it's just been a natural fit, and Josh and Kathy and the team have been amazing support to make that happen. And Jess, of course.
Ron?
I just want to thank Josh so much for all of the support that he has given to us, myself and John Paul, as we carry out the grant and make STEM part of the fabric at Renaissance. And it's not going to leave just because the money is left, because of Josh, his guidance.
Great chat.
If I can just add that Josh has had unparalleled success in winning these grants for Springfield. I think we're five or six of these grants now, Josh?
Seven.
Seven. Incredible. Unparalleled across the country. So just great work, and a lot of great programming and a lot of great services for our kids have emanated from these, these grants. So just thank you for your great work. You've been outstanding.
So if we need a loan, Josh, we'll come to you.
Well, Tad already has a lead in line on you.
You got a marker on there already?
One year, that's working.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know if there's any questions. You got, Mr. Roland, please?
I remember the first time I met Josh, he had to do money then. Josh, it's incredible how you do this, but it's amazing for the schools, and it's a positive win for them. And I can see the principals, how happy they are. So I personally want to thank you for everything you do for the schools and the students, and making our principals happy because look at Josh, they're looking for money already. So good job, Josh.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Again, I have to say, this is not only regional recognition, this is national recognition coming out of the Springfield Public School system. So to each and every one of you and your teams, from custodians on up to administration and students and staff and families, it is making a positive difference in the city of Springfield. And can you give me a smile there? Okay, there we go. All right. Great job. Well, speaking of more good news, this is another national recognition for our school system, best mid-size employer, employers from Forbes Magazine. Superintendent Warwick?
Another piece of great news for the city. I think we've worked hard. I thank the school committee for all your support with our labor contracts and all we do for our employees, providing a good environment. But this... But this is a national recognition as one of America's best midsize employers, you know, citing 300 of the best in the country. We're way up on the list, 146, but first for K-12 education. In an urban setting, I think that's absolutely incredible. So, just so thrilled with this award, because it actually comes from the employees. It's a survey done to our employees, and they respond, and based on their responses, we rated that high in a challenging urban center. So it's a really a test of the great work that has been done. And I asked Melissa from our HR department to speak to this. Come up now, please.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say, I am so happy that I was asked to share with you this wonderful news about the Springfield public schools. As the superintendent and Mayor Sarno indicated, we've been recognized as one of the best midsize employers in the nation for 2017. The Forbes article was released last week, and they immediately notified us, and that we were in the, we were in the top 50% of the 301 employee, midsize employers listed in the nation. Only 30 of that, only 35 educational institutions made the list. So the list was made up of various different types of industries. So 35 which were educational institutions, and primarily higher ed institutions that included such employers as Caltech, Brown, Georgetown, Boston College, Princeton, et cetera. And of the education industries listed by Forbes, as the superintendent mentioned, Springfield Public Schools was the top of the K through 12 employer list. So that is a great honor for the Springfield Public Schools and as an employer. In addition, we were the only midsize employer selected from Western Massachusetts. There were some midsize employers out in the eastern part of the state, but Springfield Public Schools was the only midsize employer listed in Forbes magazine from the western, from Western Massachusetts. Now, our friends at Mass Mutual and Yankee Candle were recognized for large employer in the nation, but apart from them, we were the only three out in Western Massachusetts in Forbes. So to give you a sense of what this all means, the Forbes article begins, and I'm not going to read you the whole article, I have a rule. The Forbes article begins, their first sentence is, "Each year, Forbes seeks to discover which companies operating in the U.S. today are best at making their employees feel happy, inspired, and excited." They surveyed 30,000 employees anonymously, and that they indicated in the article that the most weighted question asked of survey respondents was whether they, as the employee, would recommend their own company to others. So in your packet, I know you have a copy of a, I thought the timing was tremendous. We just received the certificate yesterday in the mail from Forbes. And in the certificate, it says that Forbes 2017, America's Best Midsize Employers, based on the results of an independent survey, Forbes recognizes the Springfield Public Schools as one of America's Best Midsize Employers 2017. In the industry, education, but this was also very wonderful news, the following parameters were taken into consideration. Attitude of the employees towards their own company, and public perception of a company by industry employees. So, but you have a copy of it. So this obviously is a tremendous recognition of our dedicated and great staff at all levels. And it is unexpected, but it's really, when you think about it, not surprising, when you consider what our mission is. You know, the Springfield Promise, as you know, states in part that the Springfield Public Schools are world-class learning environments that produce 21st century leaders. Other aspects of it say, the school district attracts knowledgeable, highly effective, and diverse teachers and principals who want to work in a high-performing district. So in closing, I want to say, we do, we don't make widgets like some of the other companies listed. What we do is we create opportunities for our students to succeed, and the promise of that reward obviously affects the attitudes of our employees towards the Springfield Public Schools and public perception. So I just wanted to, I was very excited to share this information and with the world, especially since we are in our hiring and recruiting season for the best effective staff in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions for Attorney Shay or comments? Superintendent Warwick?
I just want to thank the school committee. For all their support. A few years back, we were so far behind in a lot of our contracts, and through really tight economic times, we've really worked hard to give our employees positive contracts and the recognition they deserve. So just want to thank the school committee for all their work behind the scenes on that. I think they've done a great job, and I'm very, very appreciative.
Thank you. And I, yes, Mr. Collins?
You know, it's just, we know we work, we work hard here, and we always hope that what we're doing is felt. And working in an urban setting is one of the toughest jobs in this country. What's so great, I mean, when you, you asked our employees anonymously, and they say that they are thrilled, that they enjoy their work. That's what we all strive for, to have that feeling out there, and it's really nice to see it quantified by an independent source, that our employees, even though it's a difficult job, they feel supported and they like what they're doing. That's a, that's a huge thing.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Hurst?
I 100% agree with what Chris was just saying, and I mean, I think that this is a really big deal. Like, when I saw it come across the email, I thought, wow, Forbes? And I, I think that oftentimes, we always hear about, you know, the negative things and, you know, all the complaints, but to have this survey happen and people respond to it, especially the people that oftentimes we don't get to hear their voice, I just think that it was, it was a great, it was a big deal. So, congratulations. I mean, I just thought that was superb.
Mr. Rolland?
I agree with the colleagues. This is, and I'm grateful for our teachers, because they do work hard, and I agree with everybody here. But also our leadership, working with our principals and, you know, counselors. It starts from the top down. If you have a good leader, everybody follows, right? And this, these are our teachers, the comments says, that make these, you know, these comments in this survey, and to see that our city's striving in a different way since 2010, and I'm going to use that date, because that day's been come, it's been in my, I mean, mine for a long time, and people have been mentioning it the last couple of weeks. But if you look at 2010 to now, the city's turned it around big times. Education-wise, the city itself, we've come through a lot of hardship, and to see our school system improve this way, and our teachers, you know, be part of this recognition to let us know that they feel the same way, it's big, and I agree with Denise, it's a big news. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. I just have to say one thing. Double-edged sword. When you put yourself out like that, as Mr. Collins indicated, this is anonymous feedback. So you hope what you're doing is going to resonate, and it has resonated. And it shows in to be recognized by Forbes, which is a preeminent business magazine in the world, that anonymously, employees indicated on their own that what is going on here is positive, is quite a testament to the leadership of the Springfield Public Schools, starting from Superintendent Warwick all the way down. So, double-edged sword, you put yourself out there, that means you're open many a times to criticism, well, whether deserved or not. This came back in good fashion. So congratulations to each and every one of the individuals that were involved. And thank you, Attorney Shay. Thank you. Okay, with that, reports of standing committees, student relations, parent concerns.
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is Buildings and Maintenance Committee.
No reports.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Thank you for your work on that MOU with the police and the schools. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E is Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Collins?
We've dealt with the issue and the agenda.
Thank you for your efforts on the financial side of that MOU. F is the Vocational Education Committee. Thank you, Mr. Rolland. G is the Technology Committee. Vice Chair Murphy had to leave for family engagement. H is the School Safety Committee.
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gresham. We'll now move to the report of the superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
A few more pieces of really good news. There's some memos in your packet on this, but E is doing Massachusetts School Breakfast Report Cards. As you know, through your support, again, we have one of the highest participation rates in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. While we've been improving the program, and we're cited in this report, additionally top-ranked New Bedford, Brockton, and Springfield are seeing 80-plus percent participation in school breakfast. And as you read the research, how important a good breakfast is at the beginning of the day, and we've been working after the bell in the classroom and have organized that. Tad was here tonight. Tad took the first high school out in the state, which is noteworthy to organize a breakfast for every student in every classroom in a high school of 2,100 students. So, no small task. Now it's expanding across all of our high schools, and by mid-next year, we're going to have every school, every student getting a healthy, free breakfast in the classroom every day. So, I think it's noteworthy to get this recommendation, again, from the Massachusetts Department of Education, which is pushing this in a big way. I spoke at the superintendent's meeting last month on this. And Springfield is an All-America City Award finalist yet again. And, you know, I think that what the recognition is about, and there's some information in your packet, is our, really looking at our early reading program. They noted improved student attendance, but the biggest factor was our third-grade reading tests. Our reading scores were up 11% on the last park exam, 11%, while the kids were taking a tougher test. So, again, we're a finalist, we're within 21 finalists for the award, but I think we stand in good stead to probably receive another All-America City Award. So I think that, again, is very noteworthy. And the last part of my report, I have a contracts report in your package to review, and if you can get to Pat Roach or I, if you have any questions. But All-America City Award, Mayor, not bad, huh?
That's pretty good. Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments to superintendent's report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Say again, unfinished business. Hearing none, we'll move to new business. Say again, new business. Hearing none, was there a motion on the floor to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Hurst, or second? Second by Ms. Perez. All those in favor say aye. All those bow, the ayes have it. Thank you for watching, and good evening.